Rescheduled. Today is Monday, July 6, 2009, office room, Deer Hill Avenue. The ad hoc committee consists of myself, Greg Seaver, you're the chairman, Shay Nagashow, and Ben Chinesi. With us at this meeting is Corporation Councilman Pinter, Director of Finance, or Deputy Director Dan Garrett, Director of Planning Dennis Ockren, Director of Economic Development Wayne Shepherd, Mayor Mark Bowden, petitioner, and Paul Scialzo, Ted Haddad, Mr. Claude Prilet.
Prilet.
Close.
Yep.
That's good. Paul Jaber, and ex-official members are Councilman Joe Cabo and Councilman Bobby Arcanti. Did I miss anybody? If I did, just ring in now. Members of the public. John's always here.
Poor guy.
Yeah. And he doesn't have to be here. All right, before we begin anything, I think it'd be prudent to turn it over to the mayor here and ask him for his input as to the progress that's taking place thus far. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Mr. Seaver, and thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. And I just want to let you know, I didn't get my tan for these guys. I was breaking the leaves over the weekend, so playing the arc. But anyways, this is the commonly referred to as the 13 acres on the west side as part of the land that was given to the city for the reserve development. As you know, the reserve has slowed down markedly in their process of development, and a lot of that's a reflection of the current economic state. WCI filed for Chapter 11. The reorganization, they've since come out of, or close to coming out of, reorganization. But the project's not going to go as fast as we had anticipated because the market can't absorb the units and folks are just having a hard time economically. So just to give you some context of where this land is, this piece of land, and to give you some history on it, was initially slated to be a minor league baseball stadium during the long negotiations with the folks at WCI. Actually, it was a previous ours before WCI. They had agreed to put a minor league baseball stadium on the site. Later on, during the process of negotiations, when WCI came into picture, they said, "Look, why don't we just give you $10 million bucks for the baseball stadium? We'll give you the land. If you want to build it, you can build it. If you want to keep the money, you can keep the money." And we're sort of out of the whole baseball stadium scenario. And part of that was because WCI just doesn't do, they didn't have the experience doing that kind of construction, and they just didn't want to deal with it. From that point, we took ownership of the property through a quick, through a deed, sign over, and there were some discussions with a development group that talked about putting a multipurpose facility on that site that was going to be a hockey arena, you know, indoor arena, and park-related parking there. And if you remember, the council voted to give them about 16 months to study whether or not they were going to do that project. Eventually, they ran the economics, and it just didn't make economic sense for them. And the property's been pretty much sitting there undeveloped. In the same process, we began discussions with Mr. Foley's group relating to looking at the property a little bit different. One, looking at a less intensive use than a stadium would provide in terms of traffic and all the headaches that go with that. And number two, for the city's perspective, we wanted to arrive some ratables. We wanted to be able to get some tax revenue back into the city, as well as provide some kind of lifestyle amenity and center there. At the same time, as you know, Danbury's sort of become a popular place to do a lot of filming. We had a nice run with film that we rented out, the Emanuel Luton School. And so we began actively looking for flex space for the city to be able to lease out to a production company that would come to Danbury to do their film. Since that time we began doing this, almost 18 months ago, the film industry's under strike, the writers, the writer's strike. I think there's an actor's strike, too. I can't figure out who's on strike, but everybody's on strike. So a lot of the actual production has slowed down, but we anticipate those issues being resolved and film production to pick up again. And so we, Mr. Foley sort of approached me with this idea. I said, "Well, let's go one better. Let's have a flexible space for the city of about 5,000 square feet that we could lease on a short-term basis to a prospective production company that could store all their equipment, do their post-production there, just like they did over at the Emanuel Luton School. But it would be more of a modern facility. They could move the walls around with dividers and set it up the way they want." Mr. Foley's agreed to build a 400-seat theater that would be for independent films. This is not a Sony Cineplex, let's run 10 films at once. That's not the intention here. This is for independent films that would be first run and that would be shown, or they would use this facility as a showcase for their particular product. I mean, the ultimate goal would be that you would have a film made in Danbury and then shown in the theater. I mean, and have a debut and have a red carpet and the whole thing. That would be the goal at some point. We're not obviously there yet, but that would be kind of a neat twist to this whole development. The theater would be run by Jacob Burns, which also runs a similar kind of theater in Pleasantville, New York. They would be the operations people. They're not building it, Mr. Foley, correctly from Rockwell.
No, we're building it for.
Mr. Foley's building the theater, but then Jacob Burns would enter an agreement to actually run the theater on a daily basis. And I would strongly, I know Wayne's been down to check out their facility, as well as Ted Casumpis from my office, and I would strongly encourage any member of the council that wants to go down and check it out, let me know and we can.
Yeah, we'd be glad to arrange a tour of their facilities and, you know, go to the show wherever wants to go. We'll make arrangements and show you their theater, give you an idea of their programming and their back-office operation. They also have built, we were involved in the original development of the Jacob Burns Film Center in Pleasantville, which, just to give you a little history, was the, where it's housed now was originally one of the first motion picture, you know, theaters in Westchester County. I guess it was, it opened around 1916, 1920, something like that. Because it was a single-screen theater, it lasted into, man, late '70s, early '80s, and then it was no longer economically viable. They shut it down. It couldn't compete with the multiplexes, you know, the multi-screen theaters. It sat there, and I may be giving it, stop me if I'm giving more information than is necessary, but let me give a little history of it. The, a guy by the name of Steve Apcon, who is a retired Goldman Sachs partner, lives in Pleasantville, about two blocks from where, we own a lot of commercial property right near the theater, and have developed and are redeveloping a lot of commercial property right near the theater. He lives in a residential area about two blocks away. He'd been walking by this theater for years, and now, he had retired from Goldman Sachs this is seven, eight years ago, and had some money, had some time on his hands, and was looking for a new challenge. And was always fascinated with the film industry and films and so on. He inquired, found out that the property was available, went to us. We gave an initial large contribution, founding contribution, to the theater and helped them with it as far as the planning and construction budgeting and design and all that. And basically pulled off the total renovation and expansion to a two-theater, a two-screen independent theater, which has been usually successful. They do, they show independent films, they do various genre-type festivals, you know, it might be Italian films one week where they show.
They do a horror festival, it's very.
Do they?
Yeah.
Not a horror guy, so.
It's a big time.
And they also, through his connections, Steve has a lot of strong connections in Hollywood, they'll also preview first-run films also. They might get, like, they got Angels and Demons before, any of the theaters got Angels and Demons. And they had Dan Brown there who wrote Angels and Demons and Da Vinci Code and all that. And they have several stars come in, and they'll do cocktail parties, and they'll do meet-and-greets, and they'll show the film, and they'll have questions and answers after. So it's really become, through Steve's work, it's really become usually successful. It's a nationally known film center. And we've been talking for the last couple of years about where might be appropriate for them to expand. They didn't want to be too close to where they are now. They didn't want to compete with themselves or cannibalize themselves. So they felt this was kind of an area up here that was far enough away, and was an opportunity to basically expand their footprint. And so we felt this was a great location for it and an appropriate anchor for some kind of mixed-use lifestyle center.
There's also, and so in order to support the, obviously, the film center and the production facility as well as theater, you know, there are related boutique stores that would be there. There would be no box stores. The largest, I think, footprint would be per se Whole Foods or.
Yeah, Whole Foods type operation would be the only large retail store. The rest of them would be boutique-type retail uses.
Right, retail uses. And there'd be a small, like a gazebo for outdoor performances to accommodate, you know, soloists and maybe 100 people or 50 people, or it wouldn't be, you know, it would be, compete with an hive center or something like that. And the idea here would be that, a couple of things, is one is eventually we'd like to link this facility with the Film Festival on Main Street so that there'd be a lot of synergy between the two. I don't think the two are separate. I think the two can work very well together. I don't think we'd lose anything on Main Street by having this facility in Danbury. I think we can enhance the festival. As it is now, most of the major awards for the festival were done at the Amber Room, so it's not like you're doing those part on Main Street. We can still keep Main Street as a focal point for all the small productions or whatever, but you might be able to do a big rollout of a big film that we can attract here with this kind of facility to be a capstone or cornerstone of the event. So we think it's a way to open up the whole city for the festival long-term as well. So that's pretty much where we're at now in terms of what does a deal look like. We've made a lot of discussions. One of the things we've talked about, which I think is in the proposal, was a $2.5 million property, right, what we're calling a property development rights agreement, which would allow use of the property for 10 years and then enter a lease agreement beyond that of some certain, with the, you know, your CPIs and all that other stuff that goes in there for the next 50 years or 60 years. Obviously, there's a significant investment of money here, so you can't do like a 20-year lease and then say, "No, by the way, you're all done." So that would, in terms of that, full taxes, there's no deferrals ever offered, no tax breaks or anything like that, unless the state wants to come in and drop something in on us. Other than that, we're not actively doing that. We will anticipate creating a number of jobs, and we can probably get a number, a figure for you on that, both in the construction of the facility as well as the actually working there between the boutique stores, the theater, et cetera. So it's job creation. And finally, the last leg of this, the last piece, was that in our initial discussions, we'd like to use this payment at some point, whether it's in this budget or future budgets, to leverage the acquisition of about 200 acres across the street. That would be the old Backo Beyond property that's owned by Hank Greenberg. And we've been in discussions with Mr. Greenberg about sale. We're very close on a number. So we would leverage some of this 13 acres funding to go out and purchase about 190 acres of open space literally across the street. So any resident in that area that's concerned, well, we're giving up some of our open space. The reality is, we're going to use this money to leverage a bigger piece of open space that'll have hiking trails, and we're actually going to link this up with the town of Southeast. So you'll be able to cross the border and go back, like the New York Times is writing a piece on this in the next couple of weeks. So it's a really win-win for everybody. Danbury gets to expand its open space inventory. We get development, we get jobs, we get to enhance the film industry in Danbury. We get ratables to our tax base, which I'm sure Dan will chip in, we need. And we also are able to provide a nice linkage with the Film Festival. So that's kind of where we are. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Foley does have, I think, some renderings and some drawings, and I'm not sure exactly if you want to have him go ahead and dive right into that.
Might as well. Yeah.
Pictures make a thousand words. Right. And these are preliminary and subject to change, as fair to say.
Absolutely.
And also, our planning staff has to be there.
This is to give you a concept.
Conceptual, yeah.
This is, this is to give you an idea of the architectural style and the look of your, I don't know how to workshop with this.
Up there?
Yeah. The idea is, this is, this is a view of the main boulevard. The idea is that we're looking to do a New England village-type concept, okay? You know, that basically is, you go there maybe to see a movie, you might have something to eat before you go see the movie, you might have something to eat afterwards, you might do a little shopping before or after. It's not a place where you drive in, you spend five minutes or 10 minutes, you get back in your car and leave. It's not, it's a place where you want to, what we're commonly called these days, a lifestyle center, lifestyle-type cultural center. And, you know, we feel it all, there's going to be a good synergy between all the uses, between, you know, you might go in, you might do some shopping after the movie, you know, in a gift shop, or buy a bottle of wine or something, and, like I said, might get something to eat before or after the movie.
Summertime, there's a small gazebo that.
Yeah, which would be good for.
For solos.
Let's say the high school had a string quartet that wants to do a little recital or whatever on a Thursday evening during the summer. You know, appropriate for maybe 50 or 100 people watching, not hundreds, just a small type, you know, give, you know, local groups and everything opportunity to perform and so on. And so this is, you know, it's like I said, a normal style, cedar shakes, stucco and so on, a lot of brick pathways, landscape, you know, situation, boulevards and so on. You can walk through most of the entire development without basically, except for crossing the streets, this is all, these are all covered walkways. These are all second floors hang up, you know, overhang the first floors, so you can walk around the project without getting wet in, you know, in rainy weather and so on. Just to give you an idea of the site plan.
Mr. Foley, just out of curiosity, do you have a timeframe on this?
ASAP. Yeah, we'd like to go forward, you know, we're ready to go forward as.
I mean, how long will it take to build on it?
I would say it's an 18-month project to build it, approximately. Might be a little sooner or a little, you know, plus or minus three or four months. The theater is ready to go. Obviously, the rehearsals, you know, we're calling rehearsal studio basement, which would be for the city, would, you know, be built in conjunction with the theater.
Mr. Chairman, I'm interested about that. Wayne, when you were down there, there was a school that was there, was there that?
Across the street, they have an education facility. That's one of the things Paul knows. They have a very good relationship with Case University through the Jacob Burns Center, as we would have with Western Connecticut State University. And also trying to link some educational components to space available within your facility here so that we could develop that as our educational mission as well.
They do a lot of programs with schools, in conjunction with schools. In the theater, and they've also built down the street, and you know, this might follow depending on the success of the theater, they built, which we can arrange a tour for also, if anyone wants to go down. About a block away, Steve raised another $20 million and built a, what they call Media Arts Lab, where they actually, the theaters show the movies, the Media Arts Lab produces the movies. They actually have film production in there, animation production, do different, you know, educational programs for college-level students, high-school-level students, and they have also, they bought a house next to the Media Arts Lab where they have a director in residence. A director will come there, a famous director will come there, stay for a month, and work with people on producing films locally. Okay, for those of you who have an idea what the site is, Ridgeberry Road here, Reserve Road here, this is where you make the right into the WCI project, and these are basically the playing fields or whatever. We're proposing the entrance to be approximately where it is now, and the view that you see on this plan here is basically standing here and looking this way down at this building. This is, this is this building right here, the front of this building right here. So that would be a view looking down this boulevard. The theater and the studio space would be over here in one building, so it'd be, you know, it'd be easily accessible. The natural foods market would be down here, and like I said, this is a mixture of basically boutique retail in these buildings here. And this would be a parking structure to take overflow when the theater is particularly busy. Generally, what happens is, the way this would work is, most people that come in here for other uses in the theater would be coming in during the day. Some would come in the evening, maybe to get something to eat or something like that. The theater does things during the day and on weekends, but more in the evening during the week, in the evening or the weekend, so. So, I'm sorry, I'm trying up here, I have allergies, so my voice is around now. But we've put in, like I said, a parking structure for that overflow. We have about 600 parking spaces proposed in the project. Sorry.
Now, this, I just want to emphasize, I don't think Dennis has seen, you've seen the concept, but I don't think you've actually seen these drawings. These are just, to give you a sense of what it looks like.
The last one I saw.
And real good suggestions and so on and.
This is just our.
Similar, just when we think about. What I have looked similar.
And you notice there's no curb cuts on Ridgeberry Road.
And where's the property you wanted to save this?
It's, that's Ridgeberry Road, so it would be to the.
Need the other one up. I'll put the other one up, sir.
I'm sorry.
There's Ridgeberry Road, it's on the other side.
Yeah, Ridgeberry Road would be here, right. It'd be, it's on the other side of 84, where the Hilton is, the new Hilton, where the pond is.
It's Barrington.
It was Barrington, yeah, now it's, it's been Backo Beyond, it's AIG for the last about seven, eight years.
Where the swamps are.
There's, it's the headwaters for the Still River. That's where the Still River starts. But it's about, he's got about 300 acres there. Southeast is going to purchase the portion that butts up to ours, and we're working on a hiking trail that will go from roughly the Hilton, for the Hilton, all the way across the state line, loop around and come back, with a total of about 400 acres. But the idea would be that we would leverage this to do that.
Okay, let's, do you gentlemen have anything more right now, or just open up the questions?
Yeah.
Generally, do you have anything more there yet?
Can you read off that?
Sure.
I do have several questions. To the chair. The actual Realty Equities Group, did we get a background on who they are? I don't know.
Yeah, we can get your resume if that's, would be helpful. Sure, absolutely.
Can I continue?
Yeah.
As I did now, my questions come out. The total acreage is the full 13 acres?
Yeah, there are some wetlands there, though, so.
Yeah.
But the whole lease would be the full 13?
The whole site is, yes, we're proposing, yeah.
Would be property rights. But yes.
Yes, so we're talking about the whole.
Yes.
The entire site, which is 13, 13.125 acres.
Since the mayor mentioned this is not a lease, I'll go back here, this is term of lease, 99 years.
I know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's the first cut at what an agreement would look like. That is not the agreement. We're not asking to approve that tonight, you know, once we get the concept out there. We've got a little bit of work to do. The basic, you know, the core components are what we're looking to do, but we probably will end up calling it property rights, but it'll be agreement that allows use of the property. And then after 10 years, we'll probably have a lease that'll kick in at some certain period, which.
But eventually, it will turn into a lease.
Yeah.
At some point.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Again, this, so we get it all out, since at some point it will turn into a lease, now this Public Act 07 to 18, which required a public hearing, this would also would qualify for that.
Sure.
So at some point, this would have to go to a public hearing.
Correct.
Before this whole thing is.
Well, actually, you could, you could agree to do it and go to the council, but you can't execute the contracts until you actually do a public hearing.
Okay. So the public will have their input at some point before the city signs off.
Well, it's got to go to zoning.
The whole thing, I understand.
You mean we're outside, the whole thing's there?
No. I have a lot of land use issues, but I would, I would hold off.
Well, we got Dennis here, so can you do it right away if you want?
Well, again, there's something is, it would be traffic issues would be a concern. Noise, parking, that whole issue, figuring what this piece is, it's going up the hill, it's sitting above where everything else is, so noise could be an issue, especially with WCI being right next to it. And, because.
What kind of noise would you anticipate coming out of there, council?
I don't know, but, I mean, as cars go in and out, I don't know what, you know, noise is always an issue. Traffic would be an issue. I'm just giving them out as people talk to me on this proposal, on this, putting them on the table, as far as getting through the chair.
Absolutely.
A market analysis on the piece in general. Has the city done anything, some type of analysis of what else can the city use this property for?
We have had discussions internally about how best to utilize the piece. I think at this point, our goal is to get the best use and the best dollar value out of it for the taxpayers. By, by and large, after the 16 months it had cleared, this project really came to fruition, and we thought it really was the best, the best use of it. You could certainly turn it into housing, but of course, if you turn it into housing, you generate noise and traffic and everything you already articulated. In addition, you don't have as good ratables in terms of taxation purposes. So we really felt commercially used, that creates jobs in this economy, would be the best, highest use of the property.
And both of the Civic Center proposal and the baseball stadium would have been, would have been traffic generators, where this will be a spread-out traffic. It's not going to be a one flush of cars coming in, it's going to be a throughout-the-day situation.
Exactly.
Let me just throw this in, Councilman. Looking at this, I understand your concern about the traffic, but the parking, I mean, it's all, it looks like ample parking there, and as was Foley saying, that people are going to be using it during the day sporadically, and then be leaving or coming at night and that type of thing, so I appreciate your concern.
There's traffic in and out of that, well.
But now they get a bogging, that's the mayor's problem.
And I have now, my last question is before I turn it back over. Now, when they built WCI, one of their proposals is to have a village like this. Is that still in the plan, or is that going to contradict this?
I don't understand, I'm not aware.
It's still part of their master plan.
It's a different kind of development. That's small-scale village center, primarily for the residents of the reserve. This is not. This is not.
An example of they, you know, they might have a facility to drop your shirts off. WCI, where here they may have a tail, but it's, it's two different concepts, so they won't be competing with each other.
Even when I was on that EIC commission, when he did this, when I spoke to the developer, he did mention having a Starbucks and things of a larger scale besides just catering to the residents. He was also going to open it up to cater to the surrounding.
There's footage on that.
The P and D limits the square footage in each facility to like 1,000 square feet, and I think they're only approved for 30,000. Like, they talked about a dry cleaner, barber shop, or something to service the people who live there, nothing of any real size, but the P and D only allowed those small uses. In size, basically.
I would, Mr. Chairman, reject that. The chances of you seeing that constructed anytime in our lifetime are probably.
It's a good question, but I think that. Hold on, please, Mr. Chairman.
Unfortunately.
Things change.
Mr. Scott, I think you've gone off to something.
That's a good question. My last point was, I think that WCI would do this more as a benefit to their, their residents versus competition to their retail.
The master plan of the, of WCI, which controls the development, and, which is right there, and, you know, would have to be changed through the commission if there's any change in uses, but to the previous point you raised, that master plan indicates that the surrounds, the surrounding properties to this property are mostly of a commercial use, being office, office, hotel, things of that nature, versus residential. Most of the residential is well west of this property, near Sawmill Road, which is, which is under construction now, so it's, you know, probably a couple hundred acres west of this piece. So in this area, on the other side of Reserve Road is, is commercial for office development, and beyond that, I think it's a great deal of open space. I'm not, I'm not studying it directly, and across the street, of course, is the existing office building that was initially built to service a banking facility and a real estate office.
Would WCI have to approve this?
No. No. I may or cannot.
Mr. Allen, a pleasure to hear from you again.
Since we're discussing land use.
Absolutely.
First of all, I wouldn't sit here and try to do a site plan review at this time. I think that's a foolish waste of time. I did receive a plan that was similar to this, and it appears as though you've made some refinements, but it's basically the same. I don't see a problem with Ridgeberry Road. We're coming right off of Exit 2 or maybe 4. Easy on easy on, as they say. As far as noise is concerned, if you follow the master plan for the reserve, directly to the west of this, is an area that is designated for office use. You don't get into housing until a minimum of over 500 feet away, okay? And between that and the office development is open space, wooded areas. So I don't see that as a real problem. Again, as far as traffic is concerned, that's really should be something that the traffic engineer should look at. This committee cannot do that. You are not qualified to do that.
Well, we're that, sir. Looked right at me when you said that, too.
No, I was actually looking at Ben. My only concern, too, for one, this should be resented CA-80, because it's not part of the reserve, it's not a planned neighborhood development. Resented CA-80, and it clears up a lot of issues. We miss a lot of issues that we otherwise would have to go through in trying to shoehorn this into something that really doesn't belong in, and that's the P and D regulations, okay? And presumably, if this is going to be a lease, it's going to be a planning commission at some point, but I review and comment. But otherwise, I don't have any objections at this plan. I mean, we may find little things here and there on site plan review, but conceptually, it looks out to me.
Is Ridgeberry Road all CA-80, like no plain road anywhere?
Across the street.
Across the street, CA-80 and also, no plains, all CA-80.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's, across the street is his own CA-80, so.
There's an aisle 40 in there, too, right?
There's a little aisle where the-
But I mean, it's not like it's about his own territory.
No, it's not supposed to-
The chairman's, I can see it.
That's no, that's no plain.
Well, it's clear that we have, for homework to do, yes. Councilman, do you have anything?
Yes, through the chair, maybe to Corporation Council or maybe to the mayor or to finance. The difference between, just again, maybe put into layman terms, the difference between the property rights agreement versus a lease agreement?
I think it's all just how, through, Mr. Chairman, it's all just how you classify it for us based on our accounting methods. It's, since all practical purposes will allow for the use of the property, you know, for the length of the term of the agreement and that's all it really is. If it doesn't make a bigger difference and if after the 10-year period you want to revert back and call it a lease, you certainly can do that, too. We've done this similarly with things like Olive Garden, the Red Lobster, air-stat bidle properties out there by the airport, uncommon within the city to do these kinds of agreements. And, you know, just want to emphasize again how critical economic development is right now for the city and how important these jobs are, both the construction as well as the actual permanent jobs within the facilities. But it's all a matter of how you account for it.
Excuse me, anything further, Mr. Chairman?
No. I have to assume this is going to be a table meeting, it's going to continue?
I would assume so, yes.
But I do think, I think it was the mayor had a good suggestion, I think we should tour the facility.
I'd like to do that.
I think it's good, one-dimensional, isn't it?
Mr. Pender, just, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd be concerned about was that we have three of the ad hoc there and that constitutes a quorum of the ad hoc and would be a violation of free information. So, perhaps what we do is pair each of the members of the committee with another council person, so I don't have to like Paul wants to go down. And as long as we don't have a majority of the council there, we'll try to pack in as many people who want to go, we'll put it out to everybody. Whoever wants to go, they can go, maybe just break it into two separate trips down. Kind of like what we did with the-
Or we define the interstate exception somehow. Going, going across state lines, maybe it'll work something out.
But I know that Wayne was very impressed with the facility and as was Ted.
We can see, he gets a different perspective. And then I'd like to make a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, so real quick, this summer, sometime within the next three, four weeks, is going to be for everybody?
July's kind of hurting.
Early August, we do that.
Just making it out the next week, tomorrow, next meeting, just making it out there, we can try to schedule it through your office. I'd like to make a motion, at least for the next ad hoc meeting we have, that we can have some type of draft agreement available so we can take a look at.
Unless you intend, you're going to be able to work on it?
Sure, we can hash out those terms.
And so, you can make a motion to continue this meeting?
It'd be a motion to continue.
And there's really, we've got two tracks going on here, Mr. Chairman. We have the agreement that, or we have per view over, but we also got a zoning track. So, I think, you know, we're asking Mr. Foley to invest some money here in the zoning process. I don't want to spend his money, Ted, you know.
I talked to Paul about this and Paul thinks the zoning, he might mention to the mayor, Paul, what we talked about today, about the zoning coming before the council, I mean, no more. It doesn't seem to be, that the property should be, an occasion to change the zone and in fact, the council doesn't approve this, the process.
I mean, we're at the- Chicken or egg, that's my, that's my concern here. So, how about this, in the interim, why doesn't Mr. Javer get with Mr. Alpern and make him sit down and kind of noodle how to best proceed with the zoning side so that Mr. Foley doesn't put through an undue expense running through zoning if the council's not apt to go forward with the agreement? But conversely, the council goes forward, we're ready to go.
And I think if the zoning feels comfortable that the council has accepted this, they'd be more apt to feel more comfortable with it, when you have 200 people, no? Run into the zoning first?
Well, we've always had problems doing zoning without agreements with other people, doing it on other people's property without an agreement. Well, you'd have, you'd have to consent to us doing it.
So, I think-
The city could propose a site for a zoning change.
That would answer all the questions.
If I may-
Yeah, if you would do it, that would answer all the questions.
If I may, why don't we-
Because you don't want- I'm going to do a bunch of conversations, but she's not able to get all this stuff down, whatever I'm talking about.
Currently, because it's going to take several months just to get through that process and you'll be, you can go ahead on the lease agreement. In the meantime, it's going to take several months to get through the whole zoning process.
All right, so.
Now, they're going to have to do it anyway, it's presuming, your risk is a couple hundred dollars and that.
Okay, here's, I still think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sheen, it's amenable that we get Mr. Javer and Mr. Alpern together to figure out the best path.
Yeah, parallel track.
And let's focus in on the facility, visiting the site, see if people get a nice store, understand what we're trying to do there and then the final agreement.
Are you all right with that? So, would you really take back your motion?
No, it's a motion, it's a motion to table.
Yes.
Not table, continue.
Continue, motion to continue. At the next meeting, we'll also have a draft document for the ad hoc review. And in the meantime, planning zoning could get with the update, to review the zoning, EIC issue, planning issues that need to go.
And any council members that want to-
Just in two hours. Your motion has been made on the floor and-
Second.
It's now second. Is there any discussion on that, gentlemen? It's only us. Seeing now, tri-rides, all in favor of the motion? Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Not opposed. At this point in town, I see no further business tonight of this committee.
Motion to adjourn.
Except for, except a motion to adjourn and have it second.